Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So before we start our meeting, we're here to welcome our three new trustees. We'll start with the administration of the oath of office. I'd like to call up Councilwoman Rod Daws-Magwal, who will be administering the oath of office for Lauren Daus.
Okay.
All right, ready? Okay, we don't have to do no hand to be... Yeah? Okay. Please, raise your right hand up.
Where do I put this?
Oh, just put it right here. We'll have Martin Carlos with us. Anybody knows "Merit Comes in the Heart"? It's like a book that everybody should read. Okay, and it's so ironic because it's before the Library Commission, so...
Aww.
I?
I.
State your name.
Lauren Daus.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend...
That I would support and defend...
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well?
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge?
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am?
The duties upon which I am?
About to enter.
About to enter.
All right, congratulations, Lauren.
And we'd like to call up... Congratulations. We'll go ahead and call up Councilwoman Pam Di Giovanni to administer the oath of office for Teresa Fauqua.
Raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Teresa Fauqua.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely?
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will?
And that I will?
And faithfully discharge?
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon?
The duties upon?
Which I am about to enter.
Which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. Yay! Sign it. Did you already sign it? Correct me if I'm wrong, you're the first Samoan school board member in the United States of America, ever. Congratulations.
And last but not least, I'll call back up Councilman Rod Daws-Magwal, who will be administering the oath of office for Justine Santos.
You ready, Justine?
I think yes.
Okay. Right hand up, please. Okay. I?
I.
State your name.
Lauren Daus.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well?
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge?
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am?
The duties upon which I am?
About to enter.
About to enter.
All right, congratulations, Lauren.
And we'd like to call up... Congratulations. We'll go ahead and call up Councilwoman Pam Di Giovanni to administer the oath of office for Teresa Fauqua.
Raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Teresa Fauqua.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well?
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge?
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am?
The duties upon which I am?
About to enter.
About to enter.
All right, congratulations, Lauren.
And we'd like to call up... Congratulations. We'll go ahead and call up Councilwoman Pam Di Giovanni to administer the oath of office for Teresa Fauqua.
Raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Teresa Fauqua.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely?
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will?
And that I will?
And faithfully discharge?
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon?
The duties upon?
Which I am about to enter.
Which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. Yay! Sign it. Did you already sign it? Correct me if I'm wrong, you're the first Samoan school board member in the United States of America, ever. Congratulations.
And last but not least, I'll call back up Councilman Rod Daws-Magwal, who will be administering the oath of office for Justine Santos.
You ready, Justine?
I think yes.
Okay.
Definitely.
Right hand up, please. Okay. I?
I.
State your name.
Justine Santos.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely?
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will?
And that I will?
And faithfully discharge?
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon?
The duties upon?
Which I am about to enter.
Which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. Yay! Sign it. Did you already sign it? Correct me if I'm wrong, you're the first Samoan school board member in the United States of America, ever. Congratulations.
And last but not least, I'll call back up Councilman Rod Daws-Magwal, who will be administering the oath of office for Justine Santos.
You ready, Justine?
I think yes.
Okay.
Definitely.
Right hand up, please. Okay. I?
I.
State your name.
Justine Santos.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely?
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will?
And that I will?
And faithfully discharge?
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which?
The duties upon which?
I'm about to enter.
I'm about to enter.
Welcome. Yes. Forgot to sign it. All right. Nice nap, by the way.
All right. They look good up here, right? I'd say so. Okay, so this is the regular meeting for the Daly City Library Board of Trustees for Tuesday, February 19, 2019. I call this meeting to order. Let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll do the roll call and then get to the speaker card.
May I have roll call, please?
You certainly may. Commissioner or trustee Daus?
Here.
Trustee Fauqua?
Here.
Trustee Santos?
Here.
Trustee Balmeo?
Here.
Vice President Logarta?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So before we start our meeting, we're here to welcome our three new trustees. We'll start with the administration of the oath of office. I'd like to call up Councilman Rod Dos Magbual, who will be administering the oath of office for Lauren Daus.
All right, ready? Okay, we don't have to do no hand to be. Yeah?
It's some tradition.
Okay.
Raise your.
Please, raise your right hand up.
Where do I put this?
Oh, just put it right here.
Okay.
We'll have Martin Carlos with us. Anybody knows Mer- 'Cause in the heart, it's like a book that everybody should read. Okay, and it's so ironic, because it's before the library commission, so.
Oh.
Um, I.
I.
State your name.
Lauren Dos.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I would support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Consta- Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will, that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am.
The duties upon which I am.
About to enter.
About to enter.
All right, congratulations, Lauren.
And we'd like to call up. Congratulations. Um, we'll go ahead and call up Councilwoman Pam Di Giovanni to administer the oath of office for Teresa Fauqua.
Raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I, Teresa Fauqua.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely.
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
And faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties upon.
The duties upon.
Which I am about to enter.
Which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. Yay! Did you sign it? Correct me if I'm wrong, you're the first Samoan school board member in the United States of America, ever. Congratulations.
And last but not least, I'll call back up Councilman Rod Dos Magbual, who will be administering the oath of office for Justine Santos.
You ready, Justine?
I think yes.
Okay. Right hand up, please. Okay, I.
I.
State your name.
Justine Santos.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which.
The du- the duties upon which.
I'm about to enter.
I am about to enter.
Welcome. Yes. Nice nap, by the way.
All right. They look good up here, right? I'd say so. Okay, so, um, this is the regular meeting for the Daly City Library Board of Trustees for Tuesday, February 19, 2019. I call this meeting to order. Let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll do the roll call and then get to the speaker card.
May I have roll call, please?
You certainly may. Commissioner or trustee Daus?
Here.
Trustee Fauqua?
Here.
Trustee Santos?
Here.
Trustee Balmeo?
Here.
Vice President Logarta?
Here.
Um, and before we start, I did want to call up Councilwoman Jesslyn Manalo for some comments.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Vice President Angela Logarta. I just wanted to come up here and really welcome the Board of Trustees that have been taking the oath of office this evening. It's really wonderful that you're taking the volunteerism to give back to the city of Daly City, especially with the libraries. And so, you know, it's such an honor to have community members that are willing to give time and effort, because, you know, it's, it's, it's not, it's not paid. It's really out of your heart and willingness to give back to the community. Um, and so, congratulations to each and every one of you, to Lauren, to Teresa, and also to Justine. You have a wonderful board ahead, and I, I look forward to all the wonderful things that each and every one of you will do, and together as a board. Thank you.
Thank you. I hope everyone has had an opportunity to review tonight's agenda. If there are no updates, may I have a motion to approve the agenda? May I? Okay.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. For the minutes for our last meeting from Tuesday, January 15, 2019, is there a motion to move?
A motion?
Who shall second?
Second.
Second? Okay. Opposed? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Now let's go to the agenda. Do we have the Director's Report for the California Revealed Initiative?
Good evening. Vice President Logarta, members of the board, our guest this evening, maybe a, a new face. He's not been with us for a while, I mean, he's been with the city for a very long time, but he's not appeared before this board for a long time. I'd like to introduce Joshua Reese, and he's going to tell you all about California Revealed Initiative and what it means to Daly City and our public libraries.
Okay, the California Revealed Initiative is a state library project that is being done to help digitize old archival-type items that are found in local collections throughout the state. And Daly City is happy to have been able to nominate some of our collection to be part of it, and that's been accepted. The basic process is that, like, Daly City is a partner with the state. We nominated material, we're contributing metadata that I have to type into the computer, a lot of stuff, about what we're going to have digitized. The state is in pain to have it digitized using vendors, a couple of different vendors around the country for it. They're paying to ship the material to those vendors after we ship it to the state, and then they'll be providing access for the foreseeable future online for it. So they'll be able to migrate it from one system to another and provide continual access to it. And there'll be a specific webpage just for Daly City's items that are being part of this collection. The state started this project, actually just focused on audiovisual material back about nine years ago, and they've steadily been getting more funds and being able to include more items as they're going through. And they've now, starting with the 2018-19 round, which is what we're part of right now, they're going, they're including print items as well. Before, it was just pictures, videos, speaking things that were being included. And so, for example, we found in our storage collection stuff some half-inch video reels. Probably most of them are from the 60s or 70s, and we have no equipment to view them. We also have a few VHS tapes of various things that have been recorded, and we have nothing in the library to play them except for some of our personal equipment at home. So I viewed a couple of them and found those quite interesting, but the half-inch ones I couldn't view. We also have a lot of microfilm of local newspapers, some of them going back to the 1890s. And we have one machine that we bought about 15 years ago, and it was about $15,000 at the time for it. We would love to be able to get a new one that could convert and scan it so that people could email it. Granted, we don't foresee having any funds for that. So having the state be able to digitize some of it and make it freely available to anyone anytime, rather than just when we're open, will be a great benefit. So this is one of the ways you can see some of the items online, like with Santa Clara City Library, that has got some audio recordings or video recordings that are currently available to be viewed. Or through the Internet Archive, which is who's going to be hosting it in partnership with the state. This is how they've got various collections currently available that is up there with more being added all the time, including our material that will be there within about a year or so. So right now, I'm working on numbering and identifying an actual shipping list of what we're going to be sending. It's going to be shipped to the state library within the next month or so. Then the state will be working with the vendor to process it, which is anticipated to be done by the summer. And I'll be reviewing what gets digitized, providing more information about it to help describe it, to make it easier for people searching online to find it. And then once we've accepted everything digitally, we'll be getting the physical items back, ideally by next fall. And at that point, everything should be online, and people will be able to see it. What we're sending, where is the picture of what we're sending? There. That's what we're sending. For this round right now, 43 microfilm reels of newspapers. And the oldest of those are from about 1896, and the newest is about 1967. From five different titles, or 1973. For five different titles, including the Daly City Record, The Post, The Brisbane Sun and Tribune, Westlake Shopping News, and a few others. Most of them are from the 20s and 30s, for what's there. And then we're sending 27 books, which inclu- most of those are hand-typed narratives of, as people remember from when Daly City was founded, or early life of Daly City. And then the videotape reel, the half-inch reels, we have no clue what's on them except some label. Some of them say, like, F of L, Sam. Probably Friends of the Library with Sam Chandler. Probably from 1976, or thereabouts, but we don't really know. And then the videotapes, one of them covers various aspects of libraries throughout the peninsula that were, was filmed in the early 90s. And another one is the Daly City Focus on the Past, or something. So it's going to be interesting when we can actually see what's on some of them and have them digitized. But all of it is very relevant, hopefully, to Daly City, especially the books and stuff, and what's going to be there. Any questions?
Yeah, so you said this was the first round. How many rounds is this entire project?
As many years as the state can get money for it. Because part of it is funded from the Institute of Museum and Library Services from the federal government, and that depends on Congress to actually allocate money. And so they're hoping to be able to continue for quite a while with getting more things digitized. For some of the newspaper microfilm, they took the first 15 rolls out of like 50 or 60 rolls that we have. So at this rate, it could be four or five years before we get all of it digitized. There's also issues with copyright.
Got it.
Especially with some of the new, with the newer, well, anything post-1923 is possibly under someone's copyright. Because that's the copyright laws that they kept revising. Anything published pre-1923 went out of copyright jurisdiction January 1st.
So it sounds like it's, it'll be ongoing.
Yes. That's what we hope. We hope to be able to send more in the future. And what the books and stuff we're sending is just a selection of our local history items that seem the most interested people or the most likely to be disintegrating in the near term.
Got it.
If I could, Vice President Logarta. Interestingly enough, we discussed this concept maybe four years ago or so when Greg Lucas, the California State Librarian, paid us a visit at the Ceremony Library. If you can imagine libraries across California, not unlike Daly City Ceremony Library, where there are basements full of incredible resources that aren't accessible to the public, because they're, they're boxed up and, and not, you know, on the shelves. So his vision, when we met with him, was to create a portal for all this wonderful information out there to be accessible to people of California, because there's some amazing history, not just in our library, but, you know, San Francisco and LA and across the state. So it's a pretty exciting undertaking, a long time in coming, so.
There's over 200 partners so far, and it's not just libraries. It's archives and labor union archives and just all kinds of places that have things from early part of California that are participating.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments?
Just a small question. So as soon as these get archived digitally, are they immediately accessible to the public? Like, is this something that can be advertised at the libraries as accessible information, especially for young people, or any other educational resources?
Once this phase of the project is done, then yes, they'll be immediately available. But they have to get through the stages, so hopefully by the end of the summer or next fall. Then we'll be able to do announcements about it and publicize this type of material being available.
Thank you.
We'll be sure and update you as we make progress going forward.
Thank you. So now, I'll go ahead and move on to the trustees' report, because we have our three new trustees. I wanted to revisit and explain our four pillars of advocacy, which we introduced to the board sometime over the summer. These four pillars were created to provide structure, increase our efficiency as board members. So the first pillar is creating awareness. As trustees, we are the liaison for the library's employees, patrons, and city council. It's important that we are advocates for the libraries and any issues that come up and are being addressed. Learning about our city commissioners, a couple of weeks back, we all attended during a gathering for the Brown Act training. It was informative and great networking, and a great networking event that we learned of all the boards and commissioners that serve on them. We still want to put on the agenda the Coffee with Trustees. I was thinking already of throwing a date out there. So I was looking at the calendar, and I, did we say, let me see. We said it would be held at Ceremony Main Library on either a Tuesday or Thursday morning. So I wanted to throw a date out there before our next meeting, just to see if I could get a response from you all. I was thinking either March 5th or 7th. And then, um, if, if not, 12 or 14.
This would, this would be with just two members, correct?
Yes. I can, I can make it on either of those dates. It's just something that we want to try, we want to have coffee, you know, set up. Patrons that are using the library can approach us. We'll obviously work closely with the branch manager. Is anybody available for either of those dates that I've thrown out?
I'm available on the 7th, and can I suggest to have hot chocolate, too?
Absolutely.
I would also be available on the 7th or the 12th.
Okay. If the 7th sounds good. Well, go ahead and do it on the 7th.
The 7th at what time?
10:00 AM.
10:00 AM. So we're doing it on a morning that coincides with popular, like, storytime. Okay? Great. Moving on, communication. So I think it's very important for all of you as trustees to know what's going on with the branches that you serve. So I have a little bit of homework. I would like, and this has been ongoing, we've been doing this, each of us to take on a branch and visit, just visit, you know, connect with the branch manager, and, you know, speak to them, hear their concerns, and then report it at our next meeting. Good?
Do you need to know today, or perhaps?
Yeah, if we can go ahead and, like, if you would want to do Bay Shore.
I'll take Bay Shore.
You'll take Bay Shore? Okay. I'll go ahead and take John Daly. And then what we have left is Westlake and Ceremony. And because maybe Ceremony's our high-traffic branch, it'll take two people to visit Ceremony.
I can do Ceremony.
Okay.
I can do Ceremony, too.
Okay. Westlake, okay. Perfect. All right. So, like I said, speak to employees, listen to their concerns, hear about, you know, what the library means to them, and report it at our next meeting. Now let's move on to community involvement. The library actually holds many events and observes many holidays throughout the year. I want to ensure that we're supporting them by attending periodically. So we do get communication regarding these events. Shayla usually lets us know, but it's also found online as well. This weekend, we have an event. Do you want to talk about that a little bit, Marcel?
Sure, okay. Yes, we have a coming event this coming Saturday, which is February 23rd, 2019, Saturday. This is a journey of justice to life of Larry Etliang. So I encourage everyone to attend and support this, this event. So it will be held at Ceramonti Del Rey Theater Galeria, 699 Ceramonti Boulevard, Daly City. So I think this is also published at the, uh, Daly C- DCPLA, this event, yeah, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if we could have some representation from the board to attend this event. Unfortunately, I won't be able to make it, I'll be out of town.
I'll be there.
You'll be there, Marcel?
I'll be there.
Awesome. Thank you.
I have class.
I'll, I'll actually be performing, so I'll, I'll be there.
For sure, yeah.
Marcel will be our representation. Thank you. We have National Library Week coming up, April 7th through 13th. The theme is Libraries Equal Strong Communities. So we kind of want to really get some ideas rolling for this, because we do want some representation. During the next city council meeting on March 23rd, as staff would like to have a proclamation made. I can go ahead and attend the next meeting on March 23rd. Do I have any, March 20? 25th. I stand corrected. March 25th. We also have a project that we would like to roll out. We've talked about this previously, where we'd like to put together different video clips of ourselves, patrons, library staff, showing the, what the library means to them and the community. We do need a budget for the equipment, so we want to come up with, currently where we're at is we want to come up with three to four good questions that we could use during these interviews. And it'll actually be ongoing on our agenda. And then last is fundraising. So fundraising's actually self-explanatory. Of course, we do have DCPLA supporting our libraries, but we need to be proactive as well. I currently work for Wells Fargo, and I've been able to get a few grants approved. So if any of you all know corporate sponsorships, I urge you to work with Victoria's so we can submit applications. And now I will announce Victoria, who will give us our. And now I will announce Victoria, who will give us our DCPLA report.
Hi, I'm Victoria McGilong. I'm the Executive Director of the Daly City Public Library Associates, and, oh, sorry. In case you're not familiar with who we are, we are developing communities, civic and business support for fundraising, advocacy, and innovative programs that benefit our diverse community and promote greater awareness of the library's valuable resources. Our support complements but does not supplant the city's responsibility for funding the Daly City Library's operations. Over the span of seven years, the total in grants that DCPLA has given the lib, excuse me, the library, tops $200,000. So we're very happy to welcome you as new trustees, and I believe Angela and Marcel should have already gotten invitations, but I wanted to give you invitations to our annual St. Patrick's Day luncheon, that's on March 14th. And as well, I brought a copy of our last annual report. I'm working on one right now, but this will kind of help explain who we are and what we do. So thank you so much for coming to serve, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. I will say I did have the opportunity to attend the St. Patty's Day luncheon last year, and it was a really good time, a lot of support from the community. So we really want to be able to support DCPLA in this. Any, any other announcements?
I wanted to make a quick announcement about an upcoming library event.
Hmm?
Let's see if that worked. That's the one. So the new poet laureate for the County of San Mateo, Eileen Casanedo, reached out to us, seeking to do an event, a poetry event, at one of our libraries on, on the 16th. We're very excited that we were able to make that work, and she's also going to be joined by Kim Shuck, who is the San Francisco poet laureate. It's meant to celebrate Women's History Month, and also, of course, the beauty of poetry. And we will even have snacks in the library, unheard of. We hope that people can join us. It's, it sounds like it's shaping up to be a really nice event. Please let your friends know.
I have one quick announcement, too. Your colleagues and brothers and sisters on the Daly City Arts and Culture Commission are having a Daly City Birthday Party on Thursday, March 14th, right here in this building, mostly upstairs. Daly City is turning 108 years old. And in conjunction with that, there will be a special historical photo exhibit on the third floor. And in this room, we will be screening Daly Sisti, Daly City: Growing Up in America. It was a documentary produced in honor of the city's centennial eight years ago. If you haven't seen it, it is a wonderful, wonderful film, you'll learn lots about Daly City. And also, one of our guests will be a former branch manager at John Daly Library. Jessica Diaz will be here with her book about John Marchbank. So it'll be a nice, fun, happy celebration, and the public is welcome, and it's free, and there'll be birthday cake.
That's good. Thank you. I'll definitely attend. I know Daly City was turning 108. Okay. So let's move on to agenda building for next meeting. So for the agenda, I think it's important that we need to, let's put who will chair moving forward as president, since Tricia stepped down. I think that's an important agenda item for next meeting.
We will schedule the reorganization. I think the bylaws suggest reorganizing in the month of July, but this is an unusual circumstance where the president of the board stepped down, so we can put that.
Are we able to?
Sure.
Do that, be that, okay. Thank you. We will keep the Creating Awareness Coffees with, Coffee with Trustees event. By then, we will have had our first round, and we'll just do some follow-ups. Okay? And for communication, we'll report on the branches we've visited, what we've uncovered. For community involvement, we'll keep our video project on the agenda until we get more communication on that. We'll also get some commitments on who will be able to attend the upcoming city council meeting. I'll obviously attend, but if any of you are able to attend, please let us know. And also, get some ideas on Library Week in April, by next meeting. Any comments, questions? No? Okay. We'll keep fundraising on the agenda as well. I know we had Councilwoman Manalo give a public comment earlier on, but were there any additional public comments?
Well, in the absence that they had to leave for another event, and I don't want to speak on their behalf, but I'm sure that my fellow colleague, council members, that had to leave to go to the other event, wanted to wish everybody congratulations, and we're so proud and that you guys were already leaders, but to take this next step and to join us and work in conjunction with our council and everything, we're really excited towards the head, and, and you have great with Mr. Kern and Shayla and everyone, and there's bright days ahead, and then our library association. So we look forward to seeing what we can do to turn everything around and work together and, and see great leadership out of this, great trustees, and thank you for taking the step. Really, totally appreciate it, very humbled. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Pam.
He would like to say something.
I just want to congratulate all of you. My name is Sally Imamietoa. Sam.
Come on up. It's a ceremonial.
It's an honor. I'm sorry to.
No, go ahead.
Welcome, my dearest niece, she was in bed, but thank you, Lord, that she is well, and all of you, and I'm excited for this new venture that she is, she just came from Samoa, so it's time for her to work and, and help our community. May the good Lord be with you all, and also Ms. Mayor and Paphitaitili.
Thank you.
Go ahead and present.
Oh, gosh.
I'm sorry, all the fresh flowers are.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, uncle.
Thank you for that, those wonderful comments. Any other comments?
Well, I would like to congratulate our new members here, so, and also to our visitors who showed up this evening. I know it's a surprise, we have a lot of attendees this time, so I hope every, you know, every meeting we have a lot of attendees. But anyway, congratulations to all, so thank you so much.
I would like to thank for, for this opportunity, it's a great opportunity. This is my second time in this building. And when I came, it was acknowledgement of one of my dear friend, Raina Mefua. She was the woman of the city. And I was sitting there, and I was like, one day I'm going to sit up there. And so here I am, sitting up here, not yet on the top, but to where to start. And I'd like to thank my friends who are here, my uncle, my coworkers, thank you for taking the time. And hopefully, working for libraries, I, I love reading books, and I work with children 24/7. And I'm fortunate to work side by side with this beautiful woman, because I used to take care of her child.
At Be Sure.
At Be Sure School, so what a coincidence that we're able to work. And we need your support, our dear Daly City residents, and thank you for letting me be over here.
I'd also like to thank.
Might as well.
All, all the folks who came out, especially my parents, they actually drove from Southern California just to be here. So, you know, yeah, it's okay, don't cry. No, but really, like, you know, the, the values and the lessons that they've taught me, like, they've taught me to really strive to be like a better person, and it's a, it's an honor to, to be here. I also want to thank my, my pet family, thanks for coming out, and my student, Cheyenne, and then also my, my friends. And yeah, it's, it's an honor to be here, and I'm really excited to, to really promote literacy and also just promote libraries as a space for liberation, because I think it's important to, to read the world and also to name the experiences that we go through so that the future generations can really know what we've done, and so that they can do more in the future. So thank you.
Pam's pointing at me, so. Yeah, thank you all for being here, and thank you all for taking the time. Definitely, leading up to this day, a lot of people were like, oh, congratulations, and I, you know, for me, it was just like, this is another role I have in the community, and those are the values that I really hold. So I'm really excited to hear about the, the four focuses of this group. I think that, you know, libraries are sacred spaces where communities gather, and we need to cultivate those types of spaces. And I know there hasn't been enough, like, you know, there, there's been a kind of drawing away from doing that, and I think this group can really bring that back and make Daly City Library shine, so I'm excited to work with all of you.
Well, thank you, and welcome again to our new trustees. This meeting is adjourned.